Well, we normally be on sold six, seven boxes at one store. We ain't selling them like two or three. Like the people ain't buying them, like they, you know, DDT.
Picking the chews.
Yeah, they picking the chews and they getting up.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, November three Board of Commissioners work session. I would ask that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. I would ask at this time that Commissioner Gwen Flowers-Taylor lead us in the invocation and Commissioner Reginald Watts lead us in the pledge of the flag.
If you would join me, please. Father, we come to you tonight in Thanksgiving for the many blessings that you bestow on us. Please allow this session today to be informative and allow us to be able to get a very good understanding of the options that we have and to follow through with our responsibilities as commissioners. We ask you to be here for our employees, for our staff, and for those citizens that have attended today. These things we ask in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Father, may I pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number four, agenda items. Consider approval of the first reading of no through truck ordinance. We will hear from the staff concerning the no through, no through truck ordinance.
Good afternoon. Thank you Chairman and Board for allowing this opportunity. Just briefly, there was a minor modification that we're asking to be changed into ordinance for no through trucks. What this stems from is you may have seen new style semi trucks that only have on the rear axles instead of having two tires on each side, they've modified them and only have one tire now on each side, only putting six tires on the vehicle. We've stopped a few running through the county on our county roads and we were not able to write them issue citations because they were meeting the requirements as it was in the ordinance. So what we're asking is in subsection A and B, along with the six wheels or vehicles, we're asking to add ore vehicles with three or more axles and that would cover those commercial vehicles that are manufactured that way.
Question?
I do have a question for County Attorney. Would it be appropriate to not only include three or more axles, but also to include greater than 26,000 pounds for commercial vehicles?
We could certainly do that.
That way.
While we're making this amendment, we could, we could add that.
That, that way it would accommodate for regardless of how many axles they have because tractor trailer could actually pull an axle up if they're not hauling anything and would afford us the opportunity to use weight as a secondary option.
So what, what part of the car, the truck is the axle?
The tire that rolls on the ground.
The tires?
The, the tires connected to the axle, so that's.
So the little thing that goes horizontal?
Correct, yes.
And you're saying that for every set of tires they have on big trucks, they have one of those axles?
Correct.
And our rule presently says that we can own nothing over how many axles?
Well, it doesn't say.
How many tires?
Correct, it uses tires and some of the commercial vehicles have expanded the width of the rim that holds the tires to eliminate one set of tires, so two tires, so they would have one tire on one side, one tire on the other and then they would eliminate two tires which would allow for them to legally work with, yeah, transit based on our current policy.
Because they don't have more than six wheels.
Right, they don't have more than six wheels.
So our policy right now is just all about the wheels?
It's six wheels and thirty feet.
And what we want to do is add the axles in?
We, we would add the axles plus my recommendation based on the conversations that I've been having is also include all commercial vehicles greater than 26,000 gross vehicle weight.
Okay, so how much does a big truck weigh? I mean, like a furniture truck or like the Amazon trucks?
So the Amazon trucks would not weigh 26,000 pounds. So a dump truck, a single axle dump truck would weigh twenty, they could weigh 25,997 pounds and our guys could drive them without a commercial driver's license. But if the dump truck weighs 26,400 pounds, which is a typical dump truck, then that's considered a commercial vehicle and it would trigger this ordinance. So anything over 26,000 pounds would trigger the ordinance.
Let's remember what the issue is we're trying to solve, breaking our roads down.
Right, but I'm saying, you're saying that we have vehicles that are that heavy ourselves.
We do, we do. And we work, we run those vehicles for maintenance on those roads. I, I, I do understand the, the consideration of not wanting to break our own rules, I do. But at the same time, our, I think our intent here is to ensure that those vehicles who are 88,000, which is the new limit, or 10% above that, 90,000 pounds are totally destroying our roads. And if that's the intent of the board to make sure that we are addressing those larger vehicles, then I would believe that setting a weight limit would be appropriate. And you could extend it beyond the 26,000 pounds, you could, you could indicate that it would be 72,000 pounds or greater, or greater than three axles would be the appropriate ordinance.
I feel better with that, I guess.
Now tell me this, if they bill a latent, require them to be on the road, is it okay? How would we do that then? Do we like overlook that?
That's not a through truck.
So you have the right to go to destinations in that area using the quickest route.
Yes, the short answer is they can be on our roads if they're, if the bill of laden says.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
If they're going from I-75 up Jackson Road to Locust Grove to the cubes in Henry County and they're running 88,000 pounds just to avoid the traffic that is on I-75, that's something that is totally destroying our road on Jackson Road and that's something that I think this board is more inclined to address through this ordinance.
So I'm, I'm, 26,000 pounds is pretty.
It's pretty low. It, it, that's a three axle.
I'm for 72 or something. Ryan, you know something about this because you've had to do some stuff with this kind of stuff. I don't think 26,000 pounds is, I think that we're looking for stuff heavier than that.
It's hard to say, it's like if I can have a 3500 with 17.5 GBW and then have a trailer behind me. If I'm over 10,000 pounds or more, the fat trailer is capable of hauling more than 10,000 pounds and you got, it's supposed to be a CDL truck. And but then you're, if you're 12,000, you're over the 26,000, so any, any truck going down the road hauling anything, a skid steer, tractor, or whatever could be cited for using it, so. See, I'm more, I'm more kind of, I'm more kind of be hesitant, I'm more kind of be hesitant on the weight too. But, but I see where you're going. I mean, yeah, because it catches everybody.
Yeah, I, I'm for more weight, you know.
I think, yeah, but I think we just kind of start messing with people who just trying to, trying to do regular work. If we're, if we're at that, that low, and I'm, I'm trying to understand this whole thing about trucks.
We can understand.
But if, if we have a dump truck that is either full or empty, whatever they have in them, that's, to me, that's not the same as a tractor trailer. So, so what is the weight between here and there? And then I think that there is that whatever, whatever the number was before they gave them more weight, we already know that the more weight is too much. So, so somewhere between 70, whatever it was before, and 26 should be a number that we can kind of count on.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm concerned that adding another metric makes the ordinance more confusing and therefore more difficult to enforce because if we're just talking about wheels, axles, and length, overall length, I mean, that's pretty clear. But I think adding another and/or situation can make it a little bit more difficult.
Luke, you don't have any way of doing weight, do you?
Plus can't, we can't weigh them.
No, the only thing I can do is look at BOL paperwork they have and look at their gross vehicle weight.
There's something that they carried that says how much the truck weighs, right?
I can look at the weight of the vehicle and their bill of laden for weight.
I think 26 is too, and I understand the counselor's concern and it's a good concern we end up with, how do we enforce one of the things we're trying to do and we have that issue in lots of places.
But if it's an or, or an or, then either you're more than three axles or you're more than six tires or more than eight tires or whatever, or you're more than whatever that weight is. So not you have to be this and this and this.
Not and.
I think for me, that gives us more leeway because if you're doing either of these three things, then you shouldn't be on our road.
Right, because back, back to the point that Ryan was making, if he's hauling a skid steer and he's got a 20-foot trailer behind a 12-foot truck, that's more than 30 feet and it's three axles, now he's, that individual, Ryan would be in violation of traveling on Jackson Road just doing regular work.
If he's using as a, as a cut through, not, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a shortcut and not an actual, you're, you're headed to a job on that particular road.
Yeah, I'm not trying to, to, to get small business people.
But I'm not either.
You know, the carpet cleaning guy or the guy that's doing the detail on the cars, carrying a big water thing on the back or whatever. We're not, yeah, we're not trying to, I think that however we can make it more, be as closely specific to tractor trailers and for me, these, these requirements that we have here don't really address that. I think we should just move that weight further up so that we don't set ourselves up for random.
What's your top number? What's your advice on top number?
Actually, I would like to go back and have the conversation with Luke and with Stephanie about what the weight was previously to the state enacted the 88,000 and I would make a recommendation that we use that weight, less than that weight for, or somewhere close to that for moving forward because we have just spent a very large amount of money to upgrade Jackson Road and we want to make sure that we're managing the trucks that are traveling on that road appropriately.
So I got another question. So we, before they increase the amount of weight that you could have on the road, weren't we already saying that, that what was on the road then was too much for us?
That's exactly my point. I'd like to go back and really highlight what I think would be the appropriate amount of weight for the road that we just.
Our road, right.
Correct, for the road that we just updated.
Yeah, 26 is too low.
And 88 is too much.
Yes, find the number in between. If, Stephanie, if you would give us the nu, what, how the amendment, so we passed the first one, even if we have to in the second one, change the number a little bit, but let's get something in there on weight. So if you could do that between now and six o'clock, just.
Sure, no problem.
I know he did not ask you to just do that between now and six o'clock, right?
I, I think he did.
Are you serious? Are you, you're, you're serious, right?
I think he's looking to adopt it under first reading, but.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, adopting it under first reading with the amendment of a weight.
I, I, I would make a recommendation, Mr. Chair, that we could do that in red.
We could actually adopt it on first reading next.
In red line.
Or, or have first reading at our next meeting.
Hey, you being her, you being her down. She probably gonna have five minutes between whenever this.
Okay, all right, so our intent is to.
We make it happen as soon as possible at, at the next time we have a meeting.
Okay, so first we'll table this.
Yes.
We'll table this tonight at six o'clock.
So do we have, this is a little bit off, do we have an extra meeting? Did we plan that extra meeting this month?
We do not have an extra meeting this month. This is Thanksgiving month and we were struggling to find an additional meeting date.
I know, but I'm thinking about zoning and all that, so.
Zoning is going to be bring your lunch and dinner and midnight snack.
So, so, well, that's what I'm saying.
We have a meeting for, I, I, I will provide you that information.
So, and I'm saying that to say then, you know, we hadn't really, we said that we were going to try to do two zoning meetings because we don't have the Board of Appeals, but if we're having a second meeting, then it should be ready to, to go.
That's right, you could get, you could get it completed this month.
Having a second meeting earlier than, or adding an extra meeting in because I know we're not going to meet for zoning at the end of the month. Having a second meeting earlier, then, or adding an extra meeting in, because I know we're not gonna meet for zoning at the end of the month.
Yeah, tell us when we're meeting.
That's all, that's Thanksgiving, isn't it?
I will do that at six.
Okay.
All right, any other comments or questions? So right now, we're tabling that thing, and as soon as we can get the words in, the next time we meet,
Next agenda.
we'll do the first reading and move to the second. All right, uh, item number two.
Oh, wait a minute, hold it, I got one more question. So when we do the first reading, can you do the first reading and then also pass the resolution afterwards? Or do you have to do the first reading and wait till another time to pass the resolution?
You have to pass the resolution after second reading.
Can't be at the same time, can't read first.
Oh, the resolution isn't the second meeting.
The, actually, the resolution is, is pretty much the same at the first reading and the second reading.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, but you could pass the resolution after the first reading, right?
You just have to have a second reading in order for the ordinance to actually be changed.
But that's not the resolution.
There, the resolution is actually part of the ordinance change, it is the same thing.
So, so the question, the question that I would have in response to that is, could they adopt by first reading the ordinance change tonight with the amendment to add the weight?
We do that all the time, so yes.
So you don't have to table tonight, you could actually adopt under first reading with the motion that staff provide the weight to the.
On the second reading.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't want to push this out any further than we can, but I just want to make sure it gets done this month.
Oh, good, that's what I was, yep, thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right, item number two, consider approval of vehicle purchase for Public Works.
Mr. Kevin King is here to present this evening.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Kevin, thank you for coming.
This, uh, replacement truck, we'll, we'll be replacing a, uh, truck that was involved in an accident on East McIntosh back in July that were deemed a total loss, and we're asking to, for a replacement truck to, for the hand crews.
If you notice, the price that is listed here on the screen is fifty-four thousand one eighty-seven, this is four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars above my, uh, my spending limit. Uh, so we're bringing this to the board. Um, also, we would highlight the fact that we are making the transition from a Ford F-350 to a Ford F-250. So we're downsizing the vehicle because we've recognized that there was not a need for a 350. Um, Kevin and his team, uh, with TJ's directive, was to go find a vehicle for the least amount of money that would do the, uh, the most for our community. And the initial cost that we had received was that this vehicle was going to be a little over seventy-two thousand. So, uh, Kevin and his team worked real hard, and they've gotten the number down to fifty-four thousand one eighty-seven with all of the, uh, the incentives for this particular vehicle that will perform very well for our community. So good job to Kevin and his team.
Um, I, I know, I promised TJ I wasn't gonna ask you any questions, Kevin, but I'm gonna. But, so, help me understand this. Because when I see, you know, Public Works riding around these big two-fifty, three-fifty whatevers, I'm assuming that the number means how much power the truck has, right?
How much weight it can pull?
Okay, what, what are we pulling?
Trails.
The, the equipment trailers.
Okay.
And if we, if we were able to pull it with a one-fifty, we would. But unfortunately, the pull power of an F-150 would actually destroy the transmission on the vehicle and the, the rear axle, um, and not allow us to get the longevity of the vehicle, the use out of the vehicle.
So, so are we not gonna be pulling heavy stuff, heavier stuff now?
We realize that, uh, the two-fifty with, uh, with the increased technology that's available right now can actually pull the equipment that we're using. So we do not need the three-fifty any longer for this hand crew.
So, what, what we're talking about is the stuff that cuts the side of the roads, that equipment has to be pulled somewhere. So, the truck we're talking about, you drive it up on it, you pull it over to where it's gonna start, and it starts cutting. And we don't need three-fifty, we only need two-fifty.
Now, does this vehicle also carry personnel, and how many personnel does it carry?
It does, it's, um, it's a crew cab, so it's four doors, so it can carry as many as six, but I think you guys are still running four.
So, so this is, y'all gonna get mad at me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So TJ said, said that we're moving from inmates to, to just regular two people in a vehicle.
That, that is correct.
So I'm, you know, I'm just trying to say, why, why do we need that extra space if we're not gonna be having extra bodies in the vehicle?
That's a great question, it's something that, uh, that we review on a regular basis. But unfortunately, for two-fifties and three-fifties, Ford does not make them in a two-door model, they make them in a four-door model.
Okay, I'm, yeah.
It, it, it's just what the, the industry requires, because they kind of realize that, you know, for commercial use of a vehicle, that you're gonna have more than one person in the vehicle to carry the equipment from one place to another.
Or stuff that they've got on their backs.
That's correct.
You know, hey, let me take off my stuff, put it back there, and all the stuff I've got goes in the backseat for the driver, the other guy, yeah.
Um, so the rec, the car that was totaled, did we get insurance money from that?
We did, remember, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar, um, deductible. Uh, so we were able to get about forty-nine hundred dollars for that vehicle after the deductible was, um, was provided. Um, we do have monies available for this purchase. Uh, we had monies available through the sales of vehicles that we had, this is not coming out of TJ's money. This, remember, we started moving all of our monies into the fund balance side, so we do have funds available for this purchase.
Okay, I, I'm, I don't got nothing else.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on vote, Mr. Okay. Uh, item number three, Heritage Park Community Building Bid Approval. Rita, are you listening?
Just for, just for the record, I would like to say that I also said I was not gonna ask Greg any questions, I'm gonna try not to.
Afternoon, afternoon Greg, how are you all doing?
Good, good.
All right, we're here to talk about, basically Kyle Upstein and Associates reviewed the three lowest bids on the projects there at Heritage Park, Hedley being the lowest bid. He actually talked to the three lowest bidders, asked them questions as far as, you know, the bids on their subcontractors and stuff like that, to feel comfortable that they were capable of doing it. And pretty much all three of them came in where he felt comfortable. He did not outright recommend any single contractor, but Hedley was the lowest bidder at three million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand.
All right, let's make sure, this was, what we agreed to was four million dollars, that's what we anticipated. So, the bid that is being recommended to the, to you all is less than the four million dollars.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Um, Greg, just one point of clarification for the board. Uh, it's my understanding that Hedley has actually done work for Spalding County in the past, is that true?
Yes, they built the pickleball complex.
All right, and this is, let's make sure, this is the final of the finals of the finals of the SPOLOs money for twenty-seventeen.
Twenty-sixteen.
Twenty-sixteen, all right.
I believe this is our final project that was on the books, yes, sir.
All right, finally, Rita, did you hear that? Want to make sure we got this finally done, all right, yes.
And this will be on the agenda for this evening to award the contract, once the contract is awarded from the bid, or sorry, not the contract, but once the, um, once Hedley is awarded the bid, then we can go into contracting with Hedley for the contract to start the work on the building, and we will bring the contract back to the board for approval once the contract is completed and reviewed by council.
We're talking, still, you don't see any money difference between the three-point-seven whatever.
That is the bid for the, uh, for the demolition and construction of the building.
All right, we all square with that, we're finally gonna get this done, it's the last one, and it's taken us a long time to be able to do it, lot of conversation about it. You know, in the end, we're tearing this building down, we hoped we wouldn't have to do that, but it's turned out to be the most economical way to be able to do that, and we're trying to do as many things as we can to keep it in the original look. All right, item number four, Pine View Road Piedmont Paving Contract, Dr. Ledbetter.
I believe, uh, Mr. King is back up this afternoon.
It's me again.
Good, Kevin.
Uh, I'm here to present the, uh, the Pine View Road Project, paving project. Uh, the lowest bidder was Piedmont Paving at one million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
All right, that, that was with alternate A. Total bid, total construction without any alternates was two million.
Two million, yeah, that's right.
Two thousand two ninety-eight forty-eight.
And that's the staff recommendation, two million.
Not, i- it's our recommendation that we use the two million two thousand two ninety-eight forty-eight as, um, uh, the contingency funds for that road. Um, that way, we've got a little bit of wiggle room should we run into any issues as we pave this road.
How long is that road, how long is the section?
Three quarters of a mile.
Right.
That's pretty good for three-quarters of a mile full, full paving.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Yeah, this is, this is like Jackson Road again.
This is actually.
This is dirt.
Far more worse than Jackson Road, because you're right, this is dirt, and we've had to obtain some of the easements along the, the route. Uh, Griffin Power will need to move the power poles. Uh, there's an abandoned water line that's in the road. We had initially indicated through engineers that we were going to need to blast the rock on this road. Um, great news for us and for all the residents, there is no need to blast rock. Uh, the geotechnical engineers indicated that the material was going to be crackable, so they will be able to use just a front-end loader to move the rock out of the way. Uh, but this will take at least the next nine months, maybe a year, to complete the paving of this road to make sure that we do a good job for our community.
So that, when that road gets paved, you will be able to leave McIntosh Road and go all the way to the Griffin Hospital?
On asphalt.
That street.
That's good, that's a good, good tough stand we're taking to be able to get this done.
My only issue has been, the only connectivity from north to south has been Hill Street. And if that for some reason closes up, there's really no railway. Or people coming down, uh, Jordan Hill have to come all the way to Hill Street to get all the way back across town, so.
All right, any co, any comments or reason to think we won't approve tonight, okay, uh, moving on. Uh, item number five, approval, uh, for lease, for living quarters at Hanleider. I believe there's a need for discussion of the lease for the living quarters at Hanleider. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, I believe you've asked to conduct a meeting between the members of the collaborative, the county staff, and it is my understanding that you will attend this meeting. Would you please work with the county manager to schedule this meeting at your earliest convenience?
I most definitely will. Um, the mil, I was invited to come to the Military Affairs Committee meeting last month, but I, I was out of town and didn't know that their meeting was happening. Um, I feel like we've already sent this contract to the collaborative.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and as Regina shared in the email, our committee is, at the collaborative is concerned about how do we navigate reducing the collaborative's liability um, with an entity that doesn't have a history in providing this kind of service. So, so that's, it's kind of a big deal for us.
My issue is, uh, deadline of some sort, we've got to, whether, my original deadline was thirty-one December, get it done by thirty-one December. Uh, after your meeting, you can come back and talk about the deadline needs, but we've got to get a deadline where something's got to happen, we've been pushing and pushing and.
So, I, you know, I, one of the things that I can say that has been an observation for us is that I think that we've done a really poor job of, of putting all of our eggs in one basket. All of our eggs were in the waypoint basket, now we're trying to stick them in the GMA C basket. If we, as the county, is going to be the lead, I don't think that we can step away and not take responsibility for what happens. Because my, my whole purpose in going into this was never for it not to work. So, so if that means that we may have to advertise for what the skill set is, because nobody has, has named that, um, I, I spoke with the lady at the collaborative something, I can't tell you what the meeting was, but anyway, she's from the Salvation Army, and they, their, their shelter is closed now.
Correct.
So, I was sharing with her that we're looking for someone, but I had, it had also been said, the person has to be a veteran. So we really need to sit down and talk about what, whether or not that is a thing. Uh, is it an and, or is it an or, as opposed to someone who has experience? Because there are people who have been doing this kind of job for the Salvation Army for the last ten or twelve years.
And they're, they're without a job.
So, so I'm, I'm just saying, we need to share with our people in the surrounding counties who've worked with us on this, that this is a need that we have so that we're not struggling trying to, um.
Reinvent a wheel.
Bring somebody in to do something just to have a body in the place. Um, so, and, and I, I need to share with y'all also, the home port, which is in Macon, which has been operating for the last fourteen years successfully, um, I think he's twenty-something years out of the service, so he's ready to stop doing stuff. And the, um, the building is being bought by a physician from out of Thomaston, but that physician only wants to provide home space, no resources. So there may be a population of veterans that are going to have to transition to somewhere else, because there's not gonna be veteran benefits associated with that living. So I think it's gonna be really important that, once we step in the door, we have confidence that we've got everything in order. Now, I, I respect your deadline, I'm more concerned about getting it right the first time.
We just, you know, this, this came to us as, oh, yeah, this would be easy.
And, and I respect you, because you're keeping us on task. And if you're not doing that, we're not gonna keep moving forward. But I'm just kind of sharing with you, what my observation has been, that, that we need to do something different than what we're doing right now.
Right, okay.
And I will let, uh, get with Steve and see about setting that meeting up.
Yeah, make sure all the pla, you know who the players are, get them all there, get Steve to help you, get them there if there's an issue, all right. Uh, next item, uh, executive session. We will now enter into executive session for the following purposes, consultation with the county attorney or other legal counsel to discuss or deliberate on the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee as authorized by OCGA fifty-fourteen-three-B two. Also, to conduct an executive session for the purpose of discussion and authorization of negotiation related to acquisition, sale, disposal, or lease of real property as permitted under OCGA fifty-fourteen-three-B one-B, where public discussion could adversely affect the county position. Do I have motion going to executive session?
Motion to go into the executive session before this.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor, please say. We're in executive session, thank you, we will come back out after the executive session. Okay.
Motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
And motion in a second, all those in favor please signify by raise your hand. Four zero, we're out of executive session. Do I have motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, thank you, motion, do I have a second? In a second, all those in favor please signify by raise your hand. Four zero, we're adjourned.
All right, guys, let's see, y'all is six.
See you at six.
Yes, sir.